I will call this meeting to order. Tonight, trustee Megan Case-Persileno is unable to join us in person due to illness. And she'll be joining us via teleconference for the closed session discussion from 2938 West Howard Court, Visalia. May I have a motion to approve the amendment to the agenda noting that trustee Case-Persileno will be joining us for the closed session?
Motion to approve. Our second?
Motion by Ms. Snaylor, second by Ms. Blair. All in favor? We'll do it manually. Mine's not working. Mine's not on.
If you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it the old fashioned way. Trust, Dr. Villegas.
Yes.
Board member Snaylor, President Guerrero.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six and one absent.
Okay, we do have a quorum, and I will identify closed session topics. Closed session topics are public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release, complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, conference with rural property negotiators, anticipated litigation, and public employee evaluation superintendent. And do we have any public comment on closed session topics? Mr. Price?
It says on, hey, look at that. I bet you can hear me now. Jackie's like, what just happened? I was reading something. Okay, so my name is Greg Price. I am the VUTA president. I'm here tonight to talk to you about one specific topic, maybe two. The first topic I'm going to talk to you about is when we have teachers put on leave, paid administrative leave. I've come to you before to talk about this. Last September, we were told that we would have a review of board policy. I'm back again because apparently that never happened. I have some significant concerns. I want to make sure that, as I said to people before, I think we still live in America. I hope we still live in America. I'm not feeling that way too much these days. So I want to make sure that we have that conversation. I'm requesting a conversation in closed session with the board regarding this topic. So that is my first concern. My second concern has just been some of the violence that's been happening at sites. I'm sure some of you are aware of it. One of the things that's happening is when there's a fight or there are things like that, they're closing down lunch. And when they close down lunch, that means, I mean, there are several pieces to this, right? The teachers actually can leave for lunch. I know it's hard to believe, but they can. They can leave campus for lunch. So if they're sending everyone back to class, there isn't anybody there. In addition to that, the kids aren't getting their lunch, and sometimes they're not getting the access to go to the restroom. And then that is the same for the teachers. So both, those are all topics, and I am addressing them with staff. I have already discussed them with them. But I've gotten nine texts, phone calls, and emails about this today. So I would ask the board that we look into that and figure out how we're going to address that and how we're going to take care of those things. I came here in closed session to have a quieter conversation. I'm hoping that we can come to some resolutions on these issues. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Okay, welcome. We'll now convene the regular session. Trustee Megan Case-Persileno is unable to join us for the regular session. And I will introduce interpreter, Adam Avalos, who will serve as our Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Adam Avalos servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Okay, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form, the green form. It's located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to the administrative assistant, Delia Smart, before the item comes up on the agenda. Please complete a separate form for each agenda item if you'd like to make a comment on. The smartest sitting at the table in the back of the room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by board member Jacqueline Gately.
Please rise. Ready, salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To our republic, for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I will now read items. I will now report on action taken in closed session. In closed session on a motion by board member Nader and a second by board member Villegas, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Nathan Owens to the position of principal of Lynnwood Elementary School. Nathan Owens has been employed by Visalia Unified School District for a total of 11 years. He currently serves as the assistant principal of Annie R. Mitchell Elementary. Mr. Owens has served as an assistant principal for various elementary school sites for the last five years. Prior to his administrative role, Mr. Owens served as a history teacher, an advert teacher, and athletic director at Valley Oak Middle School. Mr. Owens holds a bachelor of arts in social science from Tabor College. He holds a single subject teaching credential in social science as well as an administrative services credential. On behalf of the board of trustees, congratulations to Mr. Owens. Are revisions to the agenda and/or enclosure items? There are the revised meeting handouts for this evening's meeting are enclosure number four, six, 12, 13, 14, and 37. Okay, I have an interesting item here. We have the oath of office and installation. The introduction and oath of office and installation of student representatives to the school board for the year 2223 school year. And Mr. Mark Thompson will introduce the students. Good evening, President Guerrero, board members, Superintendent Schrum. Today is a great honor. I get to introduce to you guys four amazing students from our four comprehensive high schools to put them in the oath of office so that they will be our student board reps for this school year. So at this time, I'd like to welcome up to the microphone here, we got Alex Elick from Mount Whitney High School, Cameron Hood from Golden West High School, Savannah Torres from Redwood High School, and Towanda Taramuka from El Diamante. All right, students, if you guys raise your right hand for me and speak up for us. So I state your name. Do solemnly swear
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will
And that I will.
Well and faithfully
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of student representative
Discharge the duties of student representative.
To the Board of Education, oh, let's do that one.
To the Board of Education.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Let's give them a hand. Alex will be our first representative. So Alex, if you want, grab your stuff. If you want to take your seat right over here by board member Villegas. Thank you to the three of you guys. Congratulations. Again, we look forward to having you guys on the board with us this year. Alex, you don't get to go that fast. We want a quick picture. Can we get a quick picture of you guys right up here, please? Our next item is focus on student learning, and we're going to enclose the number two spotlight on good things happening in the district. Superintendent Schrum.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. President, board members. Congratulations to our student board reps. Great to see you up here and excited about engaging in this year with you. So tonight, going to talk a little bit about our spotlight, and we'll get that up. And as a reminder, of course, our priorities, which we're becoming very familiar with, to be ready, be present, be successful, and be connected. And again, you'll hear themes connected to this throughout all of our presentations. So in this report tonight, we'll do the spotlight, and then also, as I have shared, I will continue to give updates. May not be every single time, but on the entry plan and tonight specifically around examining and envisioning data and our academic plan. So, you know, where do I begin, right? We had the best first day ever on August 11th. I want to just shout out to our staff, our teachers, our leaders, our families, our parents, our students. What an exceptional day. We're going to give an update here in the next report on things that went well and things we want to improve upon, but overall, it was a great start. We are at about 29,000 kids are back on our campuses, and just so exciting. I saw instruction on day one. I saw recess on day one. I saw lunch on day one. I saw get to know you activities on day one. I rode a bus on day one, and it was a great overall experience. And so I just have to give a huge shout out to all of our community, especially people exercise patience. You know, we kept talking about that. I saw joy on so many parents' faces, just able to walk their kid to the classroom after maybe not having had that opportunity, you know, for the past couple of years. And so just appreciate that, and our campus is opening to that. And now, of course, our kids know how to get to the room, and so they'll be good. We don't have to keep doing that. As a team, we held daily briefing sessions with the cabinet, extended cabinet team to make sure we were ready. And I think all of that transpired into helping us have the best first day ever. And so on these slides, you're just going to see a couple of images that were captured by our amazing team and just the excitement on the kids' faces, being back, excitement on families. The activities, you'll see manipulatives there in one classroom. I mean, we started on day one. We don't have any time to waste. And so while we were getting to know you and while we were talking about back to school procedures, we were beginning instruction. Saw so many tweets and other things about schools helping kids understand the expectations, because I believe strongly that's about setting kids up for success, big kids and little kids, and not just waiting till something happens, right? How are we practicing expectations? Some of our students may have been in remote learning the past year or two, right? So there is an adjustment period. And so how we're wrapping supports around our schools so that kids can be successful. And you'll see, we fed kids on day one. All of those things occurred. And so a lot of excitement there. They're giving it a thumbs up. So want to show you a little bit, capture some of the scenes and images and sounds of the first day. And again, thank you to Andre and the amazing team that we have now built able to better tell our story. And so I will turn it, I will step aside, and we'll show, I click on it, all right? So, you know, we did have to get Walter, the therapy horse in there for a minute, but all that to say, you know, you just look at some of these images, you know, and what strikes me about this one, I wanted to make sure we included is, in the first part of that video, you saw a lot of people that, to me, you know, kind of front facing, right? I'm the teacher, I'm the principal, you know, the board along with myself visiting. But there is a whole thousands of employees who are not front and center every day, right? But they're the ones that, without them, we would not be able to operate. We would not be able to have school. We would not have a facility that's equipped to support students. We would not have food. We would not have transportation. All of those things that go into making school work. In addition to the excellent instruction and environments that our teachers create every day, you saw that that was the first day engaging instruction on day one, and that was our expectation. And so you see here, some of the people really kind of behind the scenes in a way, our technology team, mechanical team, you know, food service staff, just so many more. I couldn't even possibly put them all on one slide. But I just hope all of those employees hear me when I say we value you. We could not do this work without you. And so you can just see some of the pride that the individuals have when they see learning happening in the classrooms. They helped create the conditions for that to occur. And so I thank them. I think our teachers, I think this board, and especially this cabinet team and our directors and coordinators for helping us have what I believe was the best first day ever. So thank you all so much. And I hope our student board rep agrees, and if not, maybe he will, just for this report, that it was, yes, the best first day ever. So thank you, board, for that. Any, I want to pause before I kind of go into this next section, which is totally kind of a little bit different. But, Mr. President, if it's all right with you, I'd like to pause for just a minute if there are any questions or comments about the best first day.
Any questions or comments?
Actually, yeah, I am certainly piqued my interest, and I'm sure members of the public. Can you tell us a little bit more about the therapy horse and how that helps serve our community and our students and, you know?
I have very limited knowledge.
Okay, next time then.
Yes. A therapy whore, that's about all I know. Yes. I don't know. All right, well, thank you all so much for that. And as I go into the update on the entry plan, tonight I want to talk a little bit about examining and envisioning, right? We're in a constant improvement cycle. As I have shared since the first day I got here, this board made it very clear when they asked me to accept this position around what their expectations were for how we improve student outcomes. Part of it was being transparent, making sure we're transparent with our data, reporting back to our board and community about where we are, where we need to go, how did we get here, what do the results imply, and how do we move forward, right? And that we have a plan. And so we know the effects of the pandemic. We know all of those sorts of things, right? So now that we know that and we're seeing it in our schools, what do we do about it? And so that's what I'm going to start bringing to you, and you'll also see in some of our action items for tonight. So first, I want to begin with some of our early data indicators. Now, I will say again, share these at our board workshop last week. This is very, very preliminary. This is not official state data yet. So this has not been, hey, here's our official outcome data. It's indicators of what it is looking like for us. So I just want to put that disclaimer out. When it comes to our English language arts performance for this past year, we see an average of 42% of our kids met or exceeded the standard, right? So that means they met the grade level expectation. So obviously, a lot of work to do there. And when you see some of our other student groups, you see different progress indicators and also larger gaps, which means we got to do something about it. Want to be very clear, very difficult. I know people sometimes want to compare, well, what was it like three years ago or four? And keep in mind, the state assessment this year was a scaled down version of previous versions. And so it's really difficult to make that comparison. So I will just simply say, I don't think we were where we wanted to be before. This shows that we have increased our gaps, and so to me, that means we have a sense of urgency around what we do to address that this year. We have to disrupt the trajectory. You can see that even more necessary in math, hence one of the first read items we have for you tonight. And you can see 25% of our kids, on average, met or exceeded math benchmark expectations. We have a lot of work to do in this area. And again, the board has made it very clear, we want this superintendent to work with our district, and what can we do to improve outcomes? One thing I think it's very important, I always want to say, is this is not because we don't have hardworking teachers. I want to be very clear. I mean, I was a teacher. My mom was a teacher. Many of us in this room are or have been teachers or parents that see how hard our teachers work. I don't think this has anything to do with how hard we're working. I think this has to do with what are we focused on? What are our priorities? What are we paying the most attention to? And I think about things like collective impact. You see the arrows on the left. I use this slide a lot. I call those kind of like well-intentioned things, right? I'm a classroom teacher, and I'm doing something great in my room, and I want to celebrate that. But that is only impacting 30 kids or so. Or maybe at a school, we have a great innovative program, and maybe it's something we need to study and replicate, right? But it's only impacting, you know, 800 kids. We have almost 30,000 kids in our system. You just saw our overall performance. It's not where we want to be. That means we have to change our system design. I use this quote all the time till people will get tired of hearing me say it. Our system is designed to get the results it's getting. So that means we can't expect different outcomes if we don't do some things to change the system, right? And so when you look at collective impact, it's around when we share goals, strategy, and action plan. Why do we have priorities that everyone is going to focus on this year? Because we've got to point all of those arrows in the right direction. That's what's going to give us that collective impact to jolt our student performance. So how are we going to do that? It's being clear about the foundation. Quality first instruction. What does that mean? That means that teachers need to know what to teach. They need to have access to high-quality materials. They need to know how to use them, how to apply them. Those are all the things, right? If we do tier one, which is fancy lingo, but that's that instruction that when you walk in the room, the teacher begins a lesson, all the kids are there, right? That has to be solid. That has to be engaging. Teachers and principals have to be equipped. That's the job of the district. Are we creating the conditions for them to be successful? If teachers are having to go out and spend their own time trying to figure out where materials and resources and what to teach, that's a problem, right? Teachers need to be able to spend their time doing what only great teachers can do, which is figuring out how to take these tools and make them work for all of the individual students in my classroom. That's what I want teachers to spend their time on. How do I reach this kid? Oh, my goodness, this strategy didn't work today. Let me deploy another one. Not trying to figure out what am I going to use, right? Because we need to be able to provide that. And then also, we've got to have some consistency. I talk a lot about, you know, maybe you're sick one day, right? And you go to a doctor. And you would, you know, and maybe the next time you go see a different doctor. It's comforting in a sense, right? You know, they've all been trained. They have a certain standard. They have a level of expectation. There's a reliability factor. Think about airplane pilots, right? Certain things are not left to chance. They have very well-thought-out plans and training. But yet, when it comes to education, we struggle a little bit in that area. And so this is about making sure we're creating the conditions so that we're not leaving it to chance that that kid gets the teacher whose arrow was pointing in that right direction, right? We create the system so that all teachers have what they need to be successful, and we have clarity. Professional learning communities, that is essentially providing opportunities for administrators to get together and talk about what's working, looking at data. Teachers getting together to talk about what's working. Oh, I noticed this teacher, your kids did really well on that subject. Mine struggled a little bit. Tell me what you did, because, you know, or vice versa, right? All professionals have groups like that where they come together, they examine their impact, and they talk about how we're going to get better together. Student health and safety, we've talked about the prioritizing, making sure our kids are in school, and then recruiting and sustaining high-quality staff. So what are we doing to support our new teachers? You're going to be seeing some exciting things this week we're going to do. But then also, do we have pipelines? Do we have career advancement opportunities and other things to keep our great teachers in Viso Unified and in our classrooms, right? So that they know they have ways to increase their impact. Maybe they don't want to leave the classroom. How do we help support that, right? So those are some of the foundational pieces we're going to be working on this year, and you're going to see a couple of those items in just a minute as well. So forward together with clarity. When I talk about this and on the envision, this is what I mean. Hold tight to our foundation. We have standards. We have things that we have to teach. We have to make sure our instruction is on grade level. And what do we do when kids are behind or advanced? We're going to talk about that. We have to build systems for clarity, development, monitoring, and adjusting. How are we doing along the way? We can't wait till we get to May and the kids take the assessment and only to find out. Or we wait till the end of the year and find out, maybe they failed a math class. That's too late. What are our systems for support along the way? Providing teachers the tools that they need to be successful. And really, this is kind of my guiding thought process here, the if-then statement, right? If teachers are provided the tools they need with the knowledge and support to implement, then they can spend their time on what matters most, the art of teaching. And that applies to principals, the structures we create around them, applies to our district team, and all of that, right? And again, countless classrooms I went into on day one, I saw teachers doing just exactly that, engaging, hands-on, activating learning within their classrooms. We want to make sure that's the norm in Viso Unified. When we do these things, we're going to disrupt the trajectory that got us to the 25% in math and the 42% in reading. I think it's imperative that we do that. Our kids can't wait. So a couple of things that we're going to bring to you tonight, we presented this in our board work session just to help start getting us along the way. So the first one I want to talk a little bit about is called Paper. So here's a little scenario I want to play out. Tell me if this sounds familiar. You know, I'm a student, right? I'm going to look at student board member, because I don't know, right? But, you know, maybe I'm in band, or maybe I'm in, you know, a sport, or maybe I'm in a club, right? And I get home, and it's like 8:00 at night or 9:00 o'clock. I saw a band practicing really late, so maybe 9:30 or 10:00, right? I get home. And I've still got some homework to do. But guess what? You know, most teachers are not available at 10:00 at night. We've gone to bed, right? Parents, I don't know, right? If it's calculus or some of those subjects, I know many of us may not necessarily be equipped to support. What is that student to do if they need some support? Or similarly, maybe it's 6:00 in the morning, right? Oh, my gosh, I forgot to do this problem. I need some help. What tools can we provide as a system for all of our students to access other supports for learning? So tonight, we're presenting a proposal to provide a 24/7 chat-based tutoring to all of our students in 4th through 12th grade through a company called Paper. This is a company that's nationally recognized. They just rolled out in some of the largest districts across the nation, including Bakersfield. Well, that's not one of the largest districts in the nation, but they're rolling out there. Clark County, Nevada, one of the top three largest systems in the nation, Palm Beach, Florida, they just rolled out there. So essentially, the way this works, a student logs on, this connects with our student information system. And so all the privacy laws, all of those things have been vetted through our contract, of course. And a kid gets on and connects with a tutor, depending on what subject they might need help in. It's multilingual, so if I'm a Spanish-speaking student and I need to connect in my language, they connect with a Spanish-speaking tutor. This is chat-based. I know for a lot of us, we're old-timey, right? We want to connect with a face, and we want to, kids much prefer texting and chatting, right? So this is a platform they're familiar with. It is accessible using their student district-issued device. They do have the option to download it on their phone if they want, but they can access it through the district laptop. It is all subject, so they can get on and say, hey, I need help with X5 plus 10 equals 30, right? I forgot how to do that. The tutors in this company are trained in what some of you may know, Socratic method, right? It's a questioning-type method. So they don't give the answer is the long and short of that. I'm well aware of the programs out there where a kid can take a picture and send it off, and they get an answer. They can Google for that. They're going to still do that if that's the objective. But if the objective is They're going to still do that if that's the objective, but if the objective is really learning how to solve the problem, then this provides that platform. So the teacher, so the tutor asks in depth questions. Well, you know, all that, right? They engage in the chat back and forth. Now, a couple of other transparency things that are important with this, because I know parents are wondering, who is my kid talking to? You know, all of those sorts of things. So all these chats are recorded. Teachers have access to this. So teachers will be trained. They'll have a dashboard. So if I'm a math teacher, I can go in and see, oh, well, Charlie and Susan had to go into a tutor session to find out about, you know, this algorithm. I'm, you know what? I'm going to pull them in a small group tomorrow because, you know, I need to give them some extra support. Or that's where they got the extra support, right? So when it comes to things like students that need help filling gaps, you know, this is another great tool for that. This is in addition to, I also want to be very clear to our teachers and others, this is in addition to all of the things that we already do for teachers. We have a triple A tutoring thing that our teachers earn stipends or extra support for. That continues. All of our school based programs continue. The point of the learning acceleration and recovery funds are in addition to what we're already doing. So this is in addition to above and beyond what we could ever do on our own as a system, right? A couple of other features of this that I'll point out, and although it's primarily for use after school, you know, we will have guidelines for teachers who want to access it during the school day. So for example, maybe I'm teaching a small group, but I've got four kids over here who are struggling with something. Well, I'm working with these four kids. What do those four kids do? They can hop on a session, you know, directed by the teacher. So they can get some support while I'm working with this group and then we can rotate and do all of those excellent teaching strategies that we do. This can also be used. Our English teachers will appreciate this. Students can also upload essays. They can upload a full essay and it gives them feedback. So instead of our teachers spending their time figuring out if the kid spelled the word right or had the right punctuation, why not let that do it? And then the kid gets the feedback and then works with the teacher to refine. It doesn't even have to be school related. Maybe I'm a student and I'm getting ready to apply for an internship. And I have to create a resume. I can upload this and have them give me feedback on my resume. College application essays. I can upload it and get feedback, right? In addition to the support that counselors and guidance counselors provide. So again, I think not only will this be a game changer for our students in fourth through twelfth grade and their families, but also we can find some great innovative ways to use this within the structure of our school day as well. And the only thing, other thing I'll say, because I want to make sure teachers hear me very clearly, nothing will ever replace a phenomenal exceptional teacher. But tools in the hands of exceptional teachers can really make a difference and extend the impact that that teacher is able to have on their class of twenty five, thirty or so students. So that's the high level of this. We'll be bringing again in consent. We presented this for first read at our work session. This will be for a two year, a partnership with this company. They will come in. We'll provide training to families, training to students. We'll roll this out, starting in our high schools and then moving on down. You can expect information to start coming out in a few weeks and trainings and things like that into September. We hope to have all of our students have access to this in fourth through twelfth grade by the end, around about by the end of September is our target. And so I'm really excited about just expanding the ability of our students to learn and our teachers to reach kids beyond what we could do on our own. And so I'm excited to share this as one of our beginnings of many other strategies to help disrupt that trajectory that you saw there that has led to twenty five percent in math and forty two percent in reading and E L A. Other thing I wanted to say is this board can expect me to bring back quarterly updates on student access. We will look to see if do we have pockets of students that may not be able to access this and try to find out why. So we'll be bringing the stat back to you quarterly, usage rate and those sorts of things as well. And once I'm done with this, happy to answer any questions about that. So super excited about that. And again, you know, kids, students, it won't give you the answer. But again, this is about learning how to do a problem. The individuals that paper contracts with, of course, again, all trained. Should a student get on there and express, you know, maybe something inappropriate or a need for help? They're all trained to connect with whatever district they're working with, the emergency protocols of that district. So they would be connected to make sure that student gets the help that they might need, should that be something that comes across in a chat. And then the next one I want to talk about is Raptor. Now, we've been before you with Raptor. This is our visitor volunteer system. When we go on to campuses, you'll scan ID. Once we get this up and running, does checks and all of those things, it will become, gives you the sticker. Parents, you know, now it saves you time. You don't have to to stand at the front desk, the secretaries that are trying to do all those ten thousand things. Now we, you know, have a way to facilitate that. In the event of an emergency, we know who's on campus, all of that sort of stuff, right? Safety and security. The superintendent search survey was clear. They wanted the new superintendent and this board was clear too, to focus on academics. I just talked about that and safety, and I'm talking about that now. This directly connects to what I've heard from teachers and our community. What we are proposing tonight and it's in our consent agenda is an expansion of Raptor. So as I've been to campuses, what I've seen is we have some practices that are inconsistent when it comes to safety and security that we need to bring some consistency to. So what the expansion of this system will do, a couple of things for our teachers and staff. So if there's a lockdown or an emergency on campus, right now you find out about that through different means. Maybe there's an all call. Maybe there are weird bells, maybe there are signals, right? Hopefully you remember what the codes are and all those sorts of things, right? There's not a good comprehensive way to notify a whole campus of, hey, we got a situation. So with Raptor, what that does is basically, I'm, I'm, this is my technical limitations, but it's almost like a, let me look at a GeoNet. Okay. It's invisible. And should there be an emergency on campus, an administrator will initiate a code on the Raptor system. Every teacher's laptop will go to signal, hey, a lockdown or hey, this or that, right? If you're a district employee and you are working on the campus that day, it's almost like an amber alert. Your district issued device will also show that alert. The other thing, and I think our teachers and staff will appreciate this, right now, if you're a teacher in a classroom and you need help, maybe you have an intercom button. Maybe somebody will be there. Maybe you have cell phone, maybe not, I don't know, right? All those things. Maybe you can open the door and say, hey, I need help. Maybe somebody's there. This is programmed however we set it up. So a teacher will have the ability to initiate a lockout or a lockdown. They will use our terminology. But I think what is really impressive here is that you'll see on there something called team assist. And that is programmed to whatever we want it to be programmed to. So a teacher in the classroom, maybe there's a situation and I needed an administrator. Maybe I don't want to do it. Maybe I need to do it discreetly, possibly. I don't know, right? Again, on the teacher issued device or their cell phone, should they choose to use that? That is their personal discretion. All of this works on student and teacher issued devices. They can initiate team assist, which will send a signal to however we program it, to the campus supervisor, to the administrator, and they'll know, hey, I need to come to this room. Furthermore, this does other things that that I won't show tonight, but but things like reunification, should we have a situation where we have to relocate students? This connects with our Power School information system. And so when it's time to reunify, our district issue team will have access to this. And so then when you're the parent and you come up to get the kid, it shows it on there. You can sign on it automatically and we can release you and then it messages to everybody on that emergency contact card, hey, student was picked up. Right? So because in an emergency, you know, everybody that's connected, that student is worried. And so if you've put their name on the emergency card in our Power School system, once they're reunified, everybody on that gets the notice. So then if you're the grandparent or you're that you're not left wondering, well, do I need to go to the school to get them or you know, that sort of thing? So all of that to say, building consistency and building systems for our district are very important. Right now, we have a lot of independent operating strategies out in our schools. Some are great. That's wonderful. Schools can still continue to use some of those things. Right? But we have to have system wide approaches for all of our thirty thousand kids. And so paper and Raptor are examples that also directly address how we provide increased academic support to kids and how we create additional safety, security measures on our campus. I also want to say, this is not exhaustive. This isn't like we're doing these two things and that's it around academics, right? There are a lot of things we're going to be looking at and examining this year. We're going to be continuing to look at our classrooms. What do our teachers need? What do our students need? You know, and sometimes tho- those are tools. And sometimes those might be people. I want to mention just a couple of things this board has done in the past couple of years. Added thirty six intervention classes. Over six hundred thousand dollars to support teachers in intervention time on timesheets. Eighteen teachers for S R funds for reduction of class sizes at elementary sites. Thirty six counselors across our district. Seven additional social workers for secondary sites. The A A A tutoring program I talked about where teachers receive a stipend for work, all that continues even with this. And so I, I mean, I could go on and on, but the point being we are looking at comprehensive solutions to improve student outcomes and to improve support for our teachers. These are just two examples. There will be more that will be coming. And so board, with that, I conclude my report. I remain available for questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Dr. Vegas.
Thank you, Superintendent Schrum. Really excited about both of these opportunities and investing in our students, investing in our community. I wanted to ask a clarifying question. I know you mentioned access to paper, the tutoring company. You know, it's twenty four seven, but it'll also be three hundred sixty five days a year. So if we have a student in summer school or maybe they're taking a class at C O S or they're at a summer academy, they will still be able to access that outside of the regular school year.
Right? As long as they are connected to a class. So you know, if I'm in summer and I'm not maybe connected to a class, it wouldn't pull from Power School. But if they're connected to a class, so for example, I'm taking summer school, I'm connected to a class, then yes.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, we'll move on to our next enclosure. That would be update on my city unified school district, twenty two, twenty three school year. Superintendent Schrum.
All right. Well, thank you. This time we're going to give our final update on back to school. So you know, we came to you before school started with how we're preparing. We came to you right after school started with how it went. So now we're going to kind of wrap that up and this will be our final back to school update because now we're back to school. So we're going to share with you a little bit about some of the successes challenging and some of the opening statistics that were generated. So I'll turn it over to who's Andy or Andy, our assistant superintendent is first up. All right.
Well, good evening, Board, President Guerrero, Mr. Schrum, school board members. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and I really appreciate this opportunity to highlight the great things that are going on. It's a wonderful segue into a lot of the information Mr. Schrum shared. Let me show you, because the great thing about our division, educational services is quite simply, we exist to make sure all of our students in our district, almost thirty thousand, get what they need to be successful. So we've worked really hard, making sure that we were prepared for the first day of school and making sure our students are set up for success for the time to come. So some statistics I wanted to share with you that I'm super excited about. The first one, we put up there in the weeks leading up to school, just a couple of weeks before, we had an opportunity to visit seventy seven families from our family community resource center. You all have partnered with us over the past few years and really invested in that facility. It's an incredible resource that we're really utilizing this year to make sure that our stool students feel connected. I shared with you last time, we did things like made sure they had haircuts, made sure they had clothes to wear, make sure they had transportation set up. We took advantage of this opportunity to visit those students that perhaps had had challenges in the past, maybe with struggling with homelessness, perhaps attendance was an issue. We wanted to make sure that they were ready to start for the best year they're going to have. So it was a great opportunity to do that. We also have a wonderful group of individuals that again, are there to make sure our students get what they need. Our social workers and our counselors are at all of our schools this year because of your commitment. And they're there again to make sure our students have what they need and they're there each and every day to again, make sure the year is great for them. Another statistic that is very exciting, this is a new program, is our extended learning opportunity program thus far. And this was the number Michelle gave me last Friday. We have three thousand sixty two students that have already taken advantage of that extended day opportunity after school. And I've talked to you before, this is a start, right? We're just getting started on this program, but the fact that it's received so much excitement from our community is wonderful and that we have the staff with our partners at heart to do that, really excited about that. Again, you know that we're working with our site leaders, our community partners to see what does our community need for us to make that extended day really successful for kids? So more information will be coming to you, but I wanted to make sure you knew that so far it's really successful. And then finally, we know that many of our students in our schools require some extra supports on our part in order to make sure they can access school. School's hard nowadays. We've got three thousand five hundred plus students that require our support from special education. We're blessed to have an incredible team of dedicated individuals who support students in that endeavor. So those students are ready to go on day one and we're constantly looking out in our community to see if perhaps there are students out there that might need some additional support. Sometimes their families or their sites aren't even aware that the need is there, but we've got the resources for them. It's our job to make sure they know what's out there. So Mr. Schrum, did you want me to ask for questions each time or go through each one? I can't remember. Okay, I'm going to invite up next our chief operations officer, Mr. Eric Care.
Thank you, Mr. De Mayo. President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board, Eric Care, operations. Just to go over a few things, reporting on the best first day ever. So please report that while there were some hiccups with transportation as we've experienced in the past, those have been predominantly resolved and the calls have really greatly decreased. And so I think we're moving in the right direction there. The biggest, one of the other biggest things is that these extreme temperatures that we've had have been really keeping our maintenance team busy. Also happy to report that the new chiller has been installed at El Diamante and so they have been very comfortable the last few days, as well as La Jolla, some major service on there. So our two big problems at the beginning of school have been at least corrected. And so we're happy to present, report that. Nutritional services has been a huge win for us. As you know, no cost breakfast and lunches for our students. That has been a seamless since day one, been seamless since day one. So very happy there. Night crews are continuing their regular runs and cleaning our sites, providing P P as as needed at sites. And so happy to report that everything's going well there. And then modernizations at Crowley, Redwood and Green Acres are proceeding with school in session. And so those sites have adapted to the the changes in student travel and the different accommodations that they've had to make there. So all in all, things are going very well for us and it's been a great first week and a half, I guess. And Nathan is next.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, President Guerrero, members of the board, Superintendent Schrum. My name is Nathan Hernandez, Business Services, and I'm going to lead off with our tech services team. They were very busy the first a couple of days of school as we handed out over forty five or I think it was forty five hundred student devices to our fourth and ninth graders, as well as collected over nine thousand Chromebooks for our K through third graders and reallocated those back into the classrooms. And school started with lots of service tickets for things like printers and things being disconnected over summer, but happy to report that most of those, I think about ninety percent of those or so were were resolved in the first two days. Over fifteen thousand online registrations were also received this year. And so very busy making sure that those were in place for first day of school. Our purchasing and print shop teams, over eight hundred P O's were issued since the first day of school. So lots of work being done around schools and getting things ready for the the rest of the school year. One point five million sheets of paper printed in these last couple of weeks. Now that does include some of the board packets, so that's but also over five thousand bound books, three thousand posters, and I think over forty seven hundred t shirts with the school logos were printed. As was mentioned, our attendance on day six, twenty eight thousand nine hundred and five, just a little over where we were last year. So that's good. We are ticking up. We are seeing some of the same kind of trend as we've seen over the last few years with some smaller class or some smaller enrollment in primary and higher enrollment in elementary schools, but we're just about in line with where we were pre pandemic. And higher enrollment in elementary schools, but we're just about in line with where we were pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic. Um, and then continuing to work um, on some of the challenges that we have, you know, TK uh, transitional kindergarten. Projections are, can be very volatile in some places. And so as we're looking at where students are showing up and managing classrooms there, we're still working with school sites to make sure we get that done. Next board meeting, we'll bring back the unaudited actuals report. And so you'll see some of the work from our finance and budget teams, but that is all I have for this evening. And I am happy to turn it over to Mister Ben Dillon, who is right back.
Thank you. Board members, President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, uh, excited to share with you a couple of updates here. So first thing that um, I know was incredibly important to all of us is that we had teachers with our students starting day one. And so. Happy to report that we had qualified uh, teachers in every one of our students' classrooms. We did start off with a few vacancies, but we are sub team did a great job of making sure that we had orientation. We had qualified subs in place. Many of those subs fully credentialed subs, which is exciting. Um, and so going forward, we, we've been able to have a consistent pool of available. Uh, certificated subs working in our classrooms each and every day as we wrap up and place those final few uh, teaching positions. The other thing and and Nathan kind of alluded to this, but we've uh, it's just been really great coordination, kind of working across divisions to help balance enrollment across our school sites. And so that's something. Uh, that's pretty much it was a daily meeting for the first week and a half of school, just making sure that we were making, you know, those little adjustments, working forward. Speaking, reaching out to principals. It was kind of like the, you know, the, the ship of kind of control and everything, lots of people, phone calls, but um, exciting to see that we're, we're moving that forward and adjusting as needed. Also want to say thank you right now to Greg Price because um, have spoke with him a lot about uh, just the part that comes with that, right? As we're balancing enrollment is also looking to see where are their classrooms that are not needed and where their classrooms that are needed based on student enrollment? And then how do we support our teachers appropriately and working through um, how we balance their support and where those classrooms take place? So Greg is. Lots of experience there. So I've been able to ask him questions just to make sure we're doing that um, and making and ensuring that we're not only just supporting our students, but we're supporting our teachers who are there to support our students as well. So that's been very helpful. Uh, and then finally here, just a couple of things. We are still daily recruiting. Primarily shifting now to our classified to continue working with our classified positions. We've been actively recruiting classified positions. You probably see those, there's emails, there's. Messages that are going out, there's postings on Edjoin, different things posting on social, social media. Uh, but trying to f- fill those positions as well as the few remaining certificated and management positions. I can share with you right now. Uh, that as of this week, we will have held interviews for all our remaining management positions and all of our elementary uh, classroom positions. Now, we, we have been able to cease our recruiting efforts because we're prepared going forward there. And then finally, uh, just so you kind of have a scope of it's not just hiring and recruiting, right? There's a whole other part of this that human resources is involved in. Um, beyond and again, uh, our benefits team, our, our risk management, as well as all of our folks who are processing. So we work very closely with. You know, Nathan's team, Eric's team and others to kind of move the whole system forward. So just to give you a scope, right? August is a big month. For all that behind the scenes stuff that Superintendent Trump mentioned to you. So in August, it's not, it's one, it's the first month of the screw they're processing, but all those new folks. To get them entered into our system and get that moving forward takes a little bit more time than the monthly going forward, once they're entered in the system. So. Our teams have, and I'm saying our teams because it's not just our human resources teams, but have processed over nine hundred transactions to support payroll. Many of those connected to. New hires and staffing changes. So kudos to all of them. They've been working very, very hard. And Mister Thompson.
All right. Good evening, President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, board members, community and staff. So my slide has no numbers on it, but it is on. All the others had lots of numbers because I'm on the human side of things, right? On the learning leadership department here and just looking at that, we did have a great first day and was very excited, but I wanted to give a shout out to our community. To our staff, to our students for patience and grace on the first day of school. As it was busy, there was a lot of cars everywhere, but people, we got there safely. Uh, we had a great start to the first day, allowing families to get on campus with their students. Um, and I think that was a great start uh, for the school year, allowing that to happen. So that was great there. Just want to say thank you for that patience that we had. Also. Just getting around, going around campuses, right? Uh, site administration, teachers, staff, just really worked on providing a welcoming and safe environment for students coming back into their families. Really worked on, on creating engagement activities. Um, and just really try to give students the overview of what they had going on. Uh, but one thing we talked about is, is getting them connected early, right? Not just talking about the syllabus. The syllabus is important, but can we connect our students from day one uh, in our classrooms? And the last but not least, our teachers have already been working hard. Um, just hitting the ground running, really targeting and grade level standards. As we know, as we look at that trajectory, we got to change our directory and that's going to be hitting grade level standards consistently and providing students support daily. Uh, in order for them to be able to move forward and really looking at, you know, every day, our students listening, speaking, reading, writing. Critical thinking, collaboration every day in every subject, because when you do those skills each and every day, you just become stronger and well-rounded in all that you do. So really just trying to target in on those. And I believe that concludes our report. So I can stand by if you want to ask any executive cabinet questions.
Any questions or comments, Miss Blair?
I do have one. Um, Mister De Mayo, you don't have to go all the way up because you're right there, but um. You said seventy-seven families were visited in the days up leading to day one. And so I just wanted to make sure, like, was that phone calls were made? Or people visited the family community resource center? What? Or was that actually our staff going out to seventy-seven different homes?
Right. The statistic I shared was those visits that we made to the homes. Now, we've got a whole group of people over there who routinely. Work with those individuals that come see us or make phone calls, but specifically the number I wanted you guys to hear. Was those individuals where we sent our team members out to the house where we saw that there was a need. We anticipated that those students might need us again this year. Perhaps they were students we've worked with in the past. Again, just to make sure that they were ready um, and prepared to start school on the first couple of days.
It's incredible. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. Our next item on the agenda is uh, by city unified school districts beliefs and commitments. First read enclosure number four.
All right. Well, thank you, board members and uh, President Guerrero. So tonight bringing to you for first read. Uh, the first draft of our beliefs and commitments. And uh, this was primarily part of our work that the board engaged in in the most recent work session. Uh, this past Friday. And so why are beliefs and commitments important? Because they help provide the direction for our district. They help provide direction for our action, I mean, uh, for our district and they compel certain actions. So for example, if we believe certain things, then that means we have to make sure our, our actions align to that, right? So again, going back to those arrows on that chart around collective impact. It is a way to bring in consistency and drive expectation. So since this is first read tonight, uh, this is for you to take and think about the language and then we'll talk about modifications that might be possible or language choice, word choice. This was taking into account everything that we heard uh, from our board members who of course represent our community. And so we heard from our board that we believe all students are learners and will achieve at high levels and show continual growth. And if that's what we believe, then we're committed to providing high quality learning experiences and equipping students and staff with the tools necessary for achievement and growth. We heard consistently from our board who heard from the community that family and community engagement is key to success, student success. So we are committed to connecting all students to their learning environments through meaningful activities. Timely and consistent communication to position families to participate in their students' learning experiences. We want our families, I love the positioned word in there, right? Because. We need to position them to be able to access and participate. And then we also heard a lot around supportive, safe uh, and innovative learning environment. So if that's what we believe. Then we're committed to making learning environments both physically and social emotionally safe, right? So not only is my physical safety okay there, but I feel welcomed. I belong, all of that. Students will be provided academic and supports necessary to be successful. Learning environments will drive innovative practices to improve outcomes and then students will be known by their name and welcomed each day. So this is our first draft and so we're open to feedback between now and um, when we present our final draft for approval. And just for those folks to know, this is part of a journey we're on as a, as a unified governance team. To create our beliefs and commitments, then to generate policy around our theory of action, because if we believe certain things and we're committed to certain things. Then we have to act a certain way, right? Our actions, our theory of actions, we can't be a district of schools. We have to be a school district and unified in that. Uh, and then that leads to further changes. What policy reform changes might we need to make around grading, around instruction, around all those sorts of things? Based on what we say. And then eventually in about a year or so, that leads to the kickoff of a strategic plan for VISA Unified School District. So. Uh, that is my report and I'll uh, return it back to you, Mister President, for any questions or comments.
Questions or comments from the board? Go ahead.
Um, on the first one, all students are learners and will achieve at high levels and show continual growth. Um, I love that. But um, in showing continual growth. What I'm cons- not concerned about, what I'm hoping for is that all students reach their fullest potential. Because we have children that are at grade level and I want to make sure that they're also, and that's continual growth, right? But that all students are able to have continual growth and reach their fullest potential. And so, um, yeah, because sometimes I feel like we leave out our, our high learners.
Any other questions or comments? Public, is there any questions or comments from you? Thank you, Mister Schrum.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is revision of board policy, high school graduation requirements, three-year math requirements, first read enclosure number five. Mister Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, uh, Board President Guerrero, Superintendent Schrum, board members, again, community again and staff. So it's actually my honor today to, to bring to you, uh, this is a first read for us to look at. I know we had some brief, we had some conversation to our board planning session, but wanted to bring it back here. For a first read so that you guys can see and also the public can see uh, what we're proposing here. So we are looking at a high school three-year math requirement. Again, following our method of what we're committed to, which is be ready, be present, be successful and be connected. Our agenda during this time together will be this, looking at the three-year math requirement, looking at our current cast data, uh, A through G. Math sequences, current math enrollment and changing our reality, which is looking at college and career readiness. Again, we have talked about this in the past, but what I'd like to bring to you today is actually just more information uh, with more data, more clarity on what this does and what it doesn't do. And also how it affects our current students going forward. Um, where I'm not sure we always had that clarity in the past. That's really my goal and intent tonight. So we can, so you guys can ponder this decision. So. Uh, Superintendent Schrum has shared already is our math cast data is not finalized yet, but what we're seeing is. We have roughly twenty-five percent of our students currently on grade level. Obviously, we have work to do there. There's things that we need to do. Obviously, as we've been moving back into in-person learning, that we do believe that's going to change things along with us focusing on grade level standards, making sure the students are ready. So A through G completion. So again, just for those A through G is really, if you are an A through G completer. That means that you are college and per, you're ready for college for a U C, that you qualify for a U C or state college. Okay? Currently, right now, if you look at this, if you look at that middle column, so the left column is showing school sites. The A through G column shows that forty-three percent of our students, uh, seniors this last year were A through G completers. And the primary reason why a student wasn't an A through G completer was because of not completing their math requirement. So seventy-one percent of those students. Uh, that weren't completers uh, were because of the, the finishing the third year of math, which is math one, math two, and then a, a class above that. Okay? So you might ask, well, what does that mean, right? So what, what are the, what's the process for students to get through math, right? In our, in our. Thing right now. So if you look at the top up there, you have freshmen, sophomore, junior, senior year, a potential mass that they might have. So traditionally. Uh, students would come in under math one, integrated math one. They would either go into integrated math two as a sophomore or math two honors, depending on their level there. And then from there, they have some choices to make. So that's, that's where they're meeting with their counselor and their family to determine what's the best track for them there. But you can see the ones that are shaded in a little bit of green there are California Community College. Courses that uh, they qualify there also California State University. And then if you see the blues there is the University of California. So again, getting to that third year is pretty important when you're looking at A through G, but also just having students ready for college um, as you look up there. So how about a student that maybe is accelerated? So if you're not familiar with this, we do have uh, eighth grade students that have the ability, if they're showing advancement. That they can take math one as an eighth grader. So for these students, they would then look at integrated math two honors, integrated math three honors. And then as a junior, they have the ability to go to pre-cal, calc or A P stats, sports stats. Again, they have a variety of roads to go to, but just seeing that importance of a third year of math. Also, so, but you might ask, well, there might be students that maybe aren't accelerated or aren't quite there, right? On grade level. And so we do have. Uh, already set up in place and we've been running this for a couple of years as we have an integrated math principles class. Uh, that has been running now for a couple of years, which is designed with pre-algebra standards to support students that they're ready for math one. Again, it's in a third year, so we still have. To determine the success of that um, as we continue to move forward, but that is something that we're looking at, but that opportunity to take that class math one and then potentially a math two. We also have some special education students that might have a modification to their math goals uh, through their I E P and through their I E P team decisions to support them uh, with their learning. And so you have those pathways right down below, which could be integrated uh, math one, A B, C D, and then getting them into math two ideally. And senior year potentially getting them into personal finance, but giving them a track as well to be successful with this requirement. So you might ask the question, because this has been a question that we've had is, okay, so we're adding another class that, that might create a problem. And that's something that we, but what we do know is this, and what you guys have shared with the. With potential beliefs that we are looking and we're vetting through is that we expect all students to, our belief is that they meet at high standards. And, and being prepared for college, to be prepared for a career out of, out of high school. So with that being said, we did some data here because we wanted to see, because there was always a conversation of if we added a third year, what does that mean for students? Does that mean that they lose electives? Are they going to be out of different classes? What we found was this, currently right now, our juniors, if you look at that bottom number at the bottom, uh, which is a percentage is eighty-nine percent. Eighty-nine percent of our juniors right at this, as of today, are taking a third year math as a junior. So they would all be spot on. So we're talking eleven percent of our students that maybe aren't there yet. And that would be the eleven percent obviously we're working on, but the reality is they're already doing the third year math. It's already happening in our sites. Okay, with that being said, there is a group because, which is very close to my heart and, and, and there's many different uh, programs that have going on where they have sequential classes. What I mean by sequential is it's year after year after year, they have opportunities there to take classes. When we looked at that number for um, some of what, many of our Vapa programs have that. So when we did take that number, we looked at that number again of that eleven percent, we had seven students. That we found that were Vapa students who haven't taken their third year math. So seven. So those seven. Obviously, we would be need to work with their counselors and working with them, but with that data is telling me very few students, this would in uh, affect or take away their ability to have an elective. Now. As Superintendent Schrum shared, this is a starting point for us because we're doing analysis and that's one thing I think you're going to see that's been changing is we've got to do more of analysis of our system. So that we have clarity of what our system is doing and producing so that we can then make adjustments and changes so we can hit those high levels. And build that capacity that we keep talking about as a team here. And one thing that, that we're putting up right here is our core sequence. And this is something we have to look at. Um, and this is not for tonight, but just we're sharing with you because our core sequence, as you can see right now, we do have a lot of elective opportunities, which is amazing. Because elective opportunities give students options and choices. Um, but that is something we will continue to look at. So when you're looking at a third year math and as eleventh grader. You can tell they still have a lot of options still available to them as if one elective was not there, it would still be two electives there. So changing of our reality, we've also talked about college and career readiness and that is up here as well and currently. And currently we had 54% of our students graduates are college and career ready. Why we wanted to share this is for A through G and college and career readiness, which they are two different things. A through G is for state colleges and universities. Uh, college and career readiness has several different options for a student to be college and career ready, but in both sets, a third year math is needed. So it is a baseline for us in that capacity. So, and so I want to share that with you. And that concludes, again, this is a first read, so there does not need to be action tonight, but a first read, but I will stand by. If there's any questions, I will feel free to answer.
Superintendent Schrum.
Yes, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Thompson for that. I just want to emphasize a couple of things again, you know, outcomes don't change unless you change expectations. And we have a very low set of expectations for graduating in Visalia. And so I think it's time that we take this issue off the table. Whatever direction we want to go, whether or not we want more kids to be college and career, if that's what the board believes, or we want more kids to be A through G, as Mr. Thompson said, both pathways require a third year. And I would say to this board and community, if you're coming out of high school and you're not college and/or career or military ready, then what, what are we saying? Uh, and so this is the first step to go down that road. We have shown you tonight that there's a pathway to do that. We have shown you tonight that there's a way to do this that also still allows our students to have flexibility and engage in the many extracurricular things that we have, because that is a priority and part of the high school experience that we value here. And so, um, you know, I think, uh, I strongly encourage this board, when this comes to final read, that we accept this recommendation to amend our policy. I think it's the right next step. And we owe it to our students, uh, both current and those coming, that we say, when you walk across the stage, Visalia Unified High School, it means something. And you have options ahead of you, and we're going to support you along the way to get there. So thank you, Mr. Thompson, and thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, uh, point out a few of those things.
Comments or questions from the board?
I had one. I just, um, I just wanted to thank you for, um, doing that presentation, Mark, Mr. Thompson. And, um, I just, I love what you said. We need to begin to analyze our systems. And I'm just really thankful to this board, um, and to Superintendent Schrum for engaging in this conversation that we're doing this together for our students.
Dr. Vegas.
Thank you. I, I also want to echo that sentiment. I think this is a great first step in the right direction. This is one of the reasons I, I joined this board was to change this policy and to improve outcomes for our students. But I want to say that I, I would like our board to go even further beyond this. I would like our board to eventually, uh, be able to adopt our graduation standards aligned with A through G. There are several school districts across the state of California that have already engaged in this and that already taken action, that have seen different outcomes for their students, improved outcomes for their students. And I will say, you know, in our board planning session, we looked at several of the districts in comparable size across the state, both bigger, both smaller. No other, no district in the Central Valley has aligned their graduation standards to A through G. We have the opportunity to lead on this, right? So I don't, I want to continue talking about not just math being A through G, but world languages, visual and performing arts, all of our other classes. Also communicating and being transparent that that still means that students can participate in four years of band, a CTE pathway, uh, electives, you know, uh, different programs, right? But that means we need to be supporting those pathways, whether that means pre-first offerings, summer school, and letting students know this is what your potential schedule can look like. On a different note, you know, I'm really excited about that, and I hope we can move in that direction and have more conversations around aligning A through G. On a second note, I want to bring up the fact that integrated math principles is only within our, our third year, right? So you said, I, I would like us to, I would like our staff to look at these classes and engage in, in more in-depth research around whether these classes are beneficial. And the reason I raise this is because within the California Community College system, we had a bill a few years ago, AB 705, which essentially, you know, um, got rid of the requirement for these remedial classes. And what they found was that students were actually more successful when they were allowed to take that course without being forced to take those other remedial courses. And so, um, I'm not necessarily opposed to them, but I would like to be informed by relevant data, right? Are these classes actually helping our students? Or are, do they have a better chance of being successful if we let them try that class, you know? And move forward with that. So I hope to be more informed about that later. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I have one. So, um, what about mathematics taken in middle school? If a eighth grader takes a, a math class, algebra, whatnot, are those accepted as part of the math requirements in high school?
Yes. So in seventh grade, they get, they're advanced in seventh grade. They take an integrated seventh and eighth grade class there, so they can take Math 1 as an eighth grader. And then that Math 1 is a high school Math 1 class, so then they can start out at Math 2 as a freshman.
Okay.
So.
Sorry.
I don't know that that's what he's asking. I think, and please correct me if you're wrong. Does he get, does that student then get high school credit for one year of math?
That would be something we need to look into on that, because I will say this, typically a student that is looking to accelerate in math is wanting to take higher levels of math. And so that is, so that would be something I can bring back to the board on what our recommendation for the board to decide on.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do have one question. Um, for the kids that don't have the skills for integrated math, and I, you know, I agree with you, Mr. Vegas. So if they take integrated math principles, then they take integrated Math 1, integrated Math 2. That's their three years in high school, correct?
That is correct. If, again, if we continue with that class, we have three years. We're going to look at the data. We've actually, Mrs. Phillips over here is already, we've already had these conversations, because we want to make sure we provide students with the effective classes that are, that are moving them forward.
Any other questions or comments from the board, Mr. Schrum?
Yeah, and I'll just comment to Mr., uh, Dr. Vegas, that's exactly the conversation, uh, that this board is going to lead with, because we're going to talk this fall about what we want that to mean. Those are all important conversations, engaging our community, our students. We'll have focus groups for that. Um, and so, you know, I just wanted to echo that, because that is, uh, important as we go through this year. And when it comes to making sure students succeed, so, you know, there are many systems across California that already either have A through G or already, and right? And so when you, as a board, make those decisions, then it compels us to make sure we are creating pathways for the kid to be successful in there, right? So if the board says we're going to have a third year math, then staff has to figure out, how do we make that happen? And make sure kids are successful, whether that's increased class support or RTI support, or whatever that might be, right? Uh, how we capture kids along the way so that they don't wait to the end of the year to fail, which puts them further behind. We know within the first few weeks of a class, how that student is doing. When do we begin remediation and support? Those are all things that, that we would be looking at. Uh, and the final thing I'd say is we have also discovered through our anal, and, um, analysis of this, we have some course sequencing problems. Uh, we have some situations in our schools where students are having to make choices, even though you saw, um, a lot of flexibility. So the third year math in the junior year is not the problem. It's what's happening in the sophomore year and some other places. And so we're taking a look at that. Rick Hamilton, one of our administrators, some of our high school principals, counselors and others. And that's a continual conversation we're going to be having, because we do have some sequencing challenges that are creating, uh, things unrelated to the third year. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public?
President Gero, real quick, um, I just want to say thank you for raising that, you know, I, I do want to make sure we're talking about raising our expectations, but also raising the amount of resources for students to meet those expectations. That's what I think we're doing with paper and some other investments that we're making. I know this will take effect, should this be adopted by the board for the following class. But I just want to emphasize and see what can we do for those students who are already kind of grandfathered in under previous graduation requirements? Can we make a concerted effort to reach out to those 11% of students who are not in that third year of math? Ask them, you know, what made you make this decision? And how can we get you to reconsider so that you are a college and career slash A through G ready? Because, you know, our class of 2026 just started a week ago. Um, this might now be on the top of their heads, but it definitely should be as they're making decisions moving forward. So I would like to see us, you know, take action to make sure students are informed around those decisions.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. Our next item is general public comment. General public comment on any school related topic may be heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to public policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It's recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Uh, Crystal Reynolds. She's not here?
No, she didn't put one in.
Okay. Nobody put one in. Okay. So being, that being that there's no public comment, we'll move on to consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item off the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
All motion.
Motion by Dr. Vegas, second by Ms. Kimonian. All in favor?
Motion carries. Student member voting yes. Motion carries six, uh, six, one absent.
Okay. We're now in recognition proclamations, and the next item on the agenda is a resolution, High School Voter Education Weeks enclosure number 34. And that would be Board Clerk Kimonian will read this resolution.
Um, whereas Ed Code Section 49, uh, 040 lists that the last two full weeks in April and September is High School Voter Education Weeks is supported by Student Voter Registration Act of 2003. And whereas Election Code Section 214E provides that every eligible high school student receive a meaningful opportunity to register to vote and specifies that it is the intent of legislature that every school do all in its power to ensure students are provided the opportunity and means to register, register to vote, whereas it is vital that all communities in Tulare County, including 18 to 24-year-olds, under, underrepresented citizens be represented at the polls. And whereas the High School Voter Education Week through traditional and non-traditional methods will focus on increasing voter registration and voter turnout and work to educate communities on the importance of voting. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the governing board endorses and supports High School Voter Race, Voter Education Weeks of the last two full weeks in April, last full two weeks in September as alternative dates, um, as feasible. Be it further resolved that the governing board encourages schools to develop outreach activities such as voter registration drives, special events to register eligible, eligible students to vote and deliver message of how voting can impact local schools, encourages high school students coordinate activities to register eligible students, and encourage teachers to conduct appropriate lessons related to voting so that students can encourage their parents to engage in voter registration process, electoral process.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor.
All second.
Second by Dr. Vegas. All in favor?
Motion carries. Student board member voting yes. Um, and it's six, one absent.
Our next item on the agenda is student representative report. Mr. Alex Selig from, uh, Mount Whitney High School. And welcome. It's good to have our students back in our boardroom.
Uh, good evening everyone. Uh, today I have the student report from El Diamante. They had their first day of school. ASB hosted a senior sunrise. The seniors went out on the field and enjoyed the sunrise with their friends. Their link crew hosted an icebreaker for the freshman class, and they swam in the pool and played games. El Diamante had their first game of the season last Thursday. Students cheered their team on to the student section. El Diamante's ASB hosted a club rush, which was a huge success with over 40 clubs attending. Many students participated and signed up for one of the many clubs. At Golden West, they welcomed students back with music, snacks, games, and then they, oh, they wanted to extend a special thanks to the Visalia Police Department, who made their campus very safe. Uh, along with lunchtime activities, music every day, Golden West celebrated their return to school with a staff versus students rally last Friday, where they played Family Feud, ran a relay race, and watched some excellent performances and played staff versus students dodgeball. Golden West is excited to host Club Rush this upcoming Friday and is already seeing growth in the number of clubs available to the students. At Redwood, they had their senior sunrise along with a pep rally for their first day of school, including the band danced and cheer. ASB welcomed back all the students. They had a rally on Friday, the second day of school, along with an icebreaker dance later that night, which was 70's disco themed. And was a huge, huge success breaking the ice for all the students on campus. The Rangers are thrilled to put on Club Day tomorrow, Wednesday, with over 50 clubs participating to allow students from all areas to get involved in all aspects. At Redwood, we, they are in mixed, uh, planning and coordinating an epic homecoming rally week. Willy Wonka themed with the rally and dress up days, lunchtime activities and a rally. I did not receive anything from Sequoia, VCIS or Vtech. And at Mount Whitney, they hosted a senior sunrise for all the seniors to come in and witness the sunrise with all the friends. And on Friday, they had the second day of school, sorry, they had a rally with a dance the night of, which was a huge success and lots of freshmen were involved. And this Wednesday, they are going to be hosting a club rush with just over 20 clubs. And that's all that's going on.
Thank you. We missed that report. We'd like to hear what's going on in the schools. Hopefully our schools that did not submit can submit one for our next meeting. Thank you very much. So we'll go on to, we'll move on to board member, uh, reports, requests. Uh, Catalina Blair.
Well, thank you very much. Um, it's so nice to hear what's going on again in our schools. So many exciting things, and I'm excited to hear about the clubs that are happening too. So the first day of school was so busy and so fun, and it was incredible to me how many people said, this really is the first, the best first day ever. I don't know if it was just like us speaking it into happening. It, that's what it felt like. But, um, I visited six schools that day. Two, two schools was with my own kids. Um, I got to take my first kid to high school, which was amazing. And then the next day I got to visit, um, Goshaan and Vtech, which was so fun and exciting. I got to attend a planning and study session on last Friday with the board, which was incredible. And we got to talk about hard things and got to talk about exciting things, which is moving forward. And, um, just, I kept picturing like our students getting grounded, these balls, and how if we overhand throw, they'll just run backwards and catch them. And so I feel like we're going to start throwing the ball further, and, and I believe they're going to catch these balls. So, um, that was exciting. And, um, I got to visit Ridgeview this morning with Dr. Vegas, and, um, that is just an amazing school full of, full of teachers that are so excited about their kids and administration that loves them too. So it was a great day.
Dr. Vegas.
There we go. Uh, thank you, President Gero. Uh, like all of you, I got to spend our first, best first day ever with wonderful staff and students. I was able to visit our Houston Bears and our Riverway Otters. Uh, and it was so good to see students back in school, excited for learning. So thank you to all our wonderful teachers, staff, administrators, administrators that really worked to make it the best first day ever. Last week I had the opportunity to visit our Shannon Ranch Wranglers, uh, during one of the mornings, and I got to return later that evening for the back to school night, which was really exciting. Uh, so I want to thank Principal Bingaman and all of our fantastic teachers and team at Shannon Ranch for really welcoming students with open arms, uh, and for taking time to show me around the school. I'm looking forward to hopefully joining one of their, uh, Wrangler roundups in the next few weeks as well. So that's exciting. Uh, today I visited Ridgeview, uh, with trustee Blair and principal Yates. And so we got to visit, uh, a lot of different classrooms from art to, uh, social studies, English, some of our special education classrooms as well, and our library, which was really awesome to see just, we got to actually stand in between passing periods and just see like tons of students come by, uh, hand out some fist bumps and some high fives, and then really, uh, seen a lot of kids excited to just be in the library and be in a space where they can be creative. I saw kids reading, working on Lego projects, um, you know, interacting with one another. And so that was just brought a lot of joy to my heart. And so thank you to, also got to learn more about some of the role of our social workers and our. and our school counselors and psychologists. So just a big shout out to all the team at Ridgeview and really all of our schools for doing such a great job. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder.
I'm just going to echo that. I visited Mineral King and Annie R. Mitchell and I'm going to say it was the best second day ever because I wasn't there for the first day, but the second day was amazing also. So I just, you know, the welcoming environment, the smiles on the kids' faces, it just warmed my heart. Sided admin, teacher, staff really took the time to welcome, warm welcome to the kids and really engage them that second day. So it, it showed that our staff and I just really appreciate everyone from, you know, our classified all the way up to admin for all their hard work because it's a lot of work to get your classroom ready and welcome those kids and it was effortless, it seemed effortless when I walked on the campus. So thank you again. And also the, the board planning session, just a great opportunity for discussions. We had great discussions on our, you know, our district beliefs and commitments, which then also transitions into what is it that we want to, that we want to improve upon? And so that comes to, you know, what are our graduation requirements? That's why we're here tonight. Some of the things that we have on the agenda is how do we improve and how do we get our kids where they need to be when they graduate college and career ready? And so I am just so excited about the plans that we have and some of the things that we are going to be approving to help our students be successful and to be whatever they want to be when they graduate.
Ms. Gabey.
Yes, definitely echo that best first day, best second day, back to school nights. I swear we didn't go even this much out for back to school nights. Last night it was El Diamante, there was like Kona Eyes, there's bands, cheerleaders. So I think just really involving and making them kind of community events. So it's been just amazing. I do want to do a little promo commercial for the Visalia Ed Foundation. Lee Turkelson, who is a longtime Visalian, he is a journalist, he was also a yearbook and photography teacher here. He at Golden West, yes, go Blazers. He is doing, he has made a PBS documentary about our sequoias called Big Trees, Big Impact. And there's a preview of it at the LJ Williams Theater. It's on September fifteenth at seven PM. And just kind of a, not only is it going to be a great documentary, just really amazing that we have somebody in our community that is doing such kind of cool work in highlighting these sequoias. So tickets are at the door, there's also going to be flyers out and all that good stuff. So promo for them. Also, shout out today, I had the opportunity to go to LD and see an avid class participate in a Socratic seminar and they were discussing cellphone use in schools. And this, it was Mrs. Nellman's class and I've got to just give a shout out to those kids. They were thoughtful, they were insightful, they brought up things that really as adults, it just reminded me that we have to include student voice in our decisions because, you know, they had such kind of just, not only just great opinions, but they backed it up with articles they had read and videos they had watched. They asked each other for their opinions, they asked for follow-up questions, just a great discussion and really just kind of showed again how important that student voice is. Because, you know, they, they really talked about how this impacts them in the future and how we're preparing them for the future and just great kids. So, and with that, yes, we've missed our student representative, but I'd also like to say we've, I've just missed the attention to teaching and learning. We've talked about A to G requirements, we've talked about third year math, we've had data. I think there's been more discussion about teaching and learning in this meeting than in the last three years combined. So thank you for that.
Ms. Kemonian.
I'm going to echo Mrs. Gabey about what Mr. Guerrero always says, it's our bread and butter and that's what we've been talking about. Also, just to follow up on the Ed Foundation, that the Visalia Ed Foundation gives scholarships to our kids, they give mini grants to our teachers. So I think this is a worthy cause. The, it was the first day, it was the best first day ever. I was able to go to Valley Oak, I went to Golden Oak and on the second day I went to Creekside where I met Walter, the therapy horse. And I think Mr. Shrum was a little, little, little concerned because I hopped this little fence and ran down and hugged the horse. But the horse is there because that's exactly what it is. It's calming effect therapy for our kids at Creekside and I was amazed at that program there and just want to thank Mrs. Yoshida, she's done a great job there. Also visited Mineral King, it was a blackout, all the kids had black shirts, lots of school spirit. I also went to a back to school night last night at LD and as I'm going around the district, there is a lot of hope, a lot of enthusiasm, people are just excited to, you know, staff is excited, kids are excited and it's, it's just really nice to, to see that. I'm excited because we're changing things and we're changing things for the better. We are turning the page and we are going to have high expectations for our kids. All the things I dreamed about before I ran for school board, that our kids would excel in math, our kids would excel in ELA and those things are happening and are happening. So I just want to thank, you know, Mr. Shrum, thank you for coming here. Thank you for staff, thank you for teachers. Teachers, you're amazing and I just love going around and watching you interact with kids. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. And I'll also say thank you to everybody. Thank you to all custodians, front office people, the bus drivers, the teachers, the management. I mean, you know, just getting everything in motion and seeing it and it's been a while. It's been a while since I've seen that and felt good. I, I went to Albow Creek and thank you for fixing the water pipes and everything, they broke down over there and you know, so things are functioning again and, and they all got fixed before school started. And then also went to Ivanhoe and I like going to Ivanhoe, it's very, very south there, but it's a very beautiful school to me. And so I enjoyed going over there, seeing the staff walking in the classrooms and seeing the students engage and, you know, they all, when I walk in, I, I, being a bigger person, I try not to scare the little kids. Basically I go in there and say hello and whatnot and you know, they, they always do that, give me a thumbs up or a high five or something. But yeah, two years ago, when, when I became board president, one of the things I, I asked and one of the things that the board agreed to is that we're going to do a lot of professional development, but something that we embarked on is having quarterly planning sessions. And this only before in the years prior, only would happen once a year. That, that's not enough, that's not enough. And, and I think for the board to be engaged and the board to really get involved in terms of what's occurring in the schools and you talk about all the academics and as, I know I play a broken horse, but I'm always saying the bread and butter, the bread and butter is academics. And that's what we focus on in our planning session and we're still going to continue that. That's going to, that's going to keep going because that's our opportunity to get to really get in depth into, into what we're doing. You know, so aside from that, I also went to Golden West High School and went to a back to school night and I was just, the parking lot was full. And there were a lot of parents there, a lot of students there and you know, I went with my grandkids and I sat in on all the different courses and whatnot and, and listened to the teachers talk about what they were going to be teaching during the year. And it was just, it felt really good being out there and saying hello to people. People, staff members that I hadn't seen for a while because of summer break and whatnot. But also, I also went to Sequoia High School last week and I met with the staff there in terms of getting Hoven Nova started over there, which starts tomorrow. And so that's something that I'm, I do weekly over there with them, with the staff and some students. And, and speaking of students, we're actively looking at bringing in the other high schools. Right now we have our four traditional high schools that come into our board and they send our, their student rep. But we're also going to work on including Sequoia High School, Vtech and VCIS. So we're going to, we're going to find a way to get everybody in here, you know, but, or the rotation, change that and whatnot. But you know, we need to have our students here and I agree with Ms. Gabey, what she said earlier, I agree. And by the way, last year we did a student voice and, and when we did that, that was at the urging of, of board member Blair, okay? And actually when I went to Redwood, I, I talked to the students, the Equity Forum, they, they, they wanted to be heard and they didn't want to come into a boardroom where a bunch of adults wouldn't hear them. They wanted us to go over there and we did, okay? So those are some of the things that are going on in terms of the board. We all spread out and went to different schools. I know we didn't get to all the schools, but I know that the superintendent went to the schools and I need to say this, that I actually heard a student say, what, what did they like best about their first day? And one of them, one of them said, I enjoyed the video. I enjoyed the video that the superintendent read. And I don't, I do not mean to offend you, but I, I talked to the board clerk right after the video and I said, geez, it reminds me of Mr. Rogers, you know? You know? Anyway, I just had to say that. Mr. Shrum, your superintendent's report.
Well, thank you for that. I, I did enjoy reading the story to kids, old and young, and I'm looking forward to doing that again. I'll, maybe we'll make it seasonal. But again, echoing the first report, thank you everyone, parents, community for the great first day. Now we are on to have our best year ever and so that will be what we transition to. I too am working my way through schools, events, football games, VAPA events, all those sorts of things. So looking forward to getting out. My schedule is packed, so you'll be seeing me at different places. Just be patient, it will take a little while to get everywhere, but I'm going to get there. So just give me a little bit of time, but you will see me. Also want to just again echo one Visalia connected, you know, had an opportunity to meet with the Stropmist Club last night and have some others that are upcoming. And a lot of excitement out there in our community about how do we increase partnerships? How do we get more kids connected? And again, going back to that press conference where, where some student reporters were at and saying, hey, club memberships, VAPA numbers, sports, all that is down and we've seen the impact that COVID has had. And so now it's about reestablishing those connections. And so love to hear about the club rushes because now it's about re-engaging kids, it's about going and talking about our programs, encouraging kids to come and join. It's hard to be connected when you're at home, right? The past couple of years. And so now there's those opportunities and so we're very much interested. Now we have some structure with our director of VAPA, our director of athletics to really build some consistency around some of those things, CTAE as well. And so just excited about what the future holds for connecting all of our kids, one hundred percent of them to something meaningful. Roundtables will be coming, information to be coming in a couple of weeks. A little teaser here, staff be looking to, so for some information, I believe maybe this Friday, for a little bit of a spirit night at the Rawhide Ball Game. And so we're looking to have a spirit night on September seventh, but more information will be coming, that's just a little teaser. So some of our board talked about that and also speaking of Visalia Education Foundation, they are partnering with us to sponsor that event. So a huge shout out to our Visalia Education Foundation for helping us make this event possible for our staff and families and we look forward to sharing more information about that. Also be looking forward, Willow Glen, you don't know this yet, but we're going to be there on Friday. We're going to have our first High Five Friday. And so all of our district staff is invited, we're going to show up at the school, not to scare anybody, but we're going to show up and just high five kids and staff as they come into the building. That will get to be something we do on a monthly basis, just to show our appreciation, excitement for staff and generate some energy. And so our first High Five Friday will be kicking off this Friday at Willow Glen Elementary. So also a little surprise coming this week for some of our new teachers, not going to share anymore about that, but we'll let it be a surprise, but that's the little teaser for that. So thank you, Mr. President.
Staff dismissal. We'll move on to our general agenda. And our next item on the general agenda is enclosure number thirty-five, resolution for state building funds application.
Good evening again, President Guerrero, Superintendent Shrum, members of the board. I'd first like to say thank you to the board for having us move this to the general agenda so that we can be more transparent about what we're doing and as we spend our, as we spend the money to modernize our schools. So this resolution, it's required because the state bond fund that reimburses the district for modernization and new, new construction projects has been depleted at the state level. That doesn't mean that we can no longer do projects, it doesn't mean that we can't get in line for the reimbursements should the state have additional bond funds available. There's four projects that you've previously approved listed on this resolution. It's La Jolla Heating HVAC, the boiler chiller replacement at La Jolla, the science modernization at La Jolla, Pinkham HVAC replacement, Redwood Gym HVAC addition, as well as the gym modernization. The HVAC projects are all going to be fully funded by Esser Funds, so there will be no, and those funds are eligible for reimbursement, even though those are federal dollars, we can apply for reimbursement with those, for those funds. The La Jolla Science Modernization is a Measure A project and the bonds that were sold for Measure A for this project were sold to fully fund the project, so it wasn't sold at a sixty, forty or a fifty, fifty split. The bonds were sold to fully fund this project and so when we get the reimbursement money back, we'll be able to move that fund, those funds forward to do additional projects. Additionally, the Redwood Gym Modernization is being funded by Fund Four Hundred Balance and the Pinkham and Redwood HVAC is also being funded by Esser Funds. So all of these, these, all of these projects are fully funded by different various funds within the district and no money was, no money was borrowed, nothing was financed. And so just wanted to bring that to the board to kind of provide clarity on what the purpose of this resolution is and I would ask for your approval.
Okay, this is an action item, so I do need a motion for this. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Ms. Gabey motions, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Kemonian, all in favor?
Motion carries student board member voting yes, six yes, one absent.
Thank you, board.
Our next item on the agenda is a notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of administrative services credential waiver, enclosure number six, Mr. Dillon, HRD.
There we go. Eric tried to sabotage me. Good evening, board, board president Guerrero, superintendent Shrum. I am bringing before you this evening on enclosure thirty-six, a request for us to move forward with submitting a, a waiver to the California Commission on Teacher Credentially. This is very similar to waivers we've done for our teaching staff. This is specific for an administrative credential that we're looking at. Similar in the same way, it allows the individual the opportunity to work through that program and, and get through the intern credential process. So that's what I'm requesting.
This is an action item.
Correct. Move to approve, all second.
Motion by Ms. Snyder, second by Ms. Gabey, all in favor?
Motion carries student board member voting yes, six yes, one absent.
The next item on the agenda is enclosure number thirty-seven, notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approval provisional internship permit requests.
Thank you. Yes, you'll notice there were initially two individuals on this list. Good news in that the first individual no longer requires this type of credential. They were actually by submitting some additional paperwork and next steps that they had taken, able to become eligible for intern credentials. So they will not require that PIP. So you just have the one individual on there, similar to what we've talked about. The individual just needs some additional time to work through that process to become intern eligible, hopefully going in next year.
I'll move.
Motion by Ms. Snyder, second by Ms. Snyder, all in favor?
Motion carries student board member voting yes, six yes, one absent.
The last item on the agenda is the warrant list, August first through twenty twenty-two, to August fifth, twenty twenty-two, enclosure number thirty-eight, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Guerrero, members of the board. Mr. Shrum, this is our routine item to approve warrants for August first through August fifth.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gabey.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kemonian, all in favor?
Motion carries student board member voting yes, six yes, one absent.
There are no more items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.